Mr. Mayor, would you, I see Councilmember DeLong now is joining. Mr. Mayor, would you like to call the meeting to order?
You know, let's call this regular council meeting to order. What are you today?
Today's April twenty first.
Yeah, April twenty first. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Due to the recommendations, this is Eric for, and I'm the city administrator. Due to the recommendations of the Centers for Disease Control and the State of Emergency declared by the City of North Kansas City and the stay-at-home order issued by Mayor Don Stilo and Clay County Health Department. This meeting is being held virtually with the mayor, city council members and city staff joining the meeting on an online platform. The public may view the meeting live on Channel Two, the city's cable channel, or the city's YouTube channel, which can be found on the city's website at www.nkc.org/live. At this time, I'd like to ask the city clerk to please call the roll of the city council.
Councilmember Pierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Stefan?
Here.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I'd like to note that, at least I believe, logging into the meeting are Finance Manager Nicholas Hawkins, City Councilor Tom Barzee, IT Manager Stephen Roberts, Community Development Director Sarah Copeland, Public Works Director Pat Hopper, Fire Chief Dave Hargus, Police Chief Gavin Freeman, Assistant City Administrator Kim Nakahodo, and City Clerk Crystal Dos. At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Pierman to lead everyone in the Pledge of Allegiance. One lesson that we learned from the pledge at our last meeting is that it would be best if everybody else remained muted. So, Councilmember Pierman, could you please lead everyone in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Mayor, would you like, would you like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember? Sorry, go ahead, sir.
Go ahead.
Councilmember DeLong? Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Farr is the second. Councilmember DeLong made the motion. The city clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Pierman? Councilmember Pierman?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay.
Locked my mute button.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
And Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item is comments from the public. And we did receive one comment that was submitted, which I will now read. It reads as follows. My name is H.J. Bear Kissler. I reside at twenty-one seventeen Gentry Street, North Kansas City, Missouri. I would like to respond to a discussion that took place on Tuesday, April seventh, twenty-twenty, during the city council's regularly scheduled meeting. This discussion was regarding a budget amendment for the eleven-hundred Gentry project, following other steps the road district has taken to assist the city in this project. In January twenty nineteen, the road district, at the city's request, paid McConnell and Associates ten thousand five hundred dollars to road mill the eleven-hundred block of Gentry Street. A standard two inches of asphalt were removed during this process. This resulted in exposing the original concrete base. Temporary wedging using millings was placed to driveways and around manholes. The city had delays with their engineers on getting final plans for this project. This caused the project to be delayed a year. Due to this delay, and after receiving complaints from an area business, the city asked the road district to install permanent wedging at the driveways and around manholes. This was done in October of twenty nineteen. It cost four thousand five hundred dollars, which was also paid by the road district. Once the city completes their work, the road district has agreed to do a two-inch overlay in the area that was road-milled in January of twenty nineteen. The anticipated cost of this is approximately sixteen thousand dollars, which will be paid by the road district. This will restore the street to its original elevation. This is just one example how the city and the road district can work together to complete projects that better the conditions of our city streets. What concerned me about this discussion was the knee-jerk reaction of some kind of council members to some misinformation presented during the discussion. It was suggested that the city should go after the road district to reimburse them for purportedly improper work done by the road district in the past. I have been involved with the city and/or the road district for nearly four decades. During this time, I have never seen a street overlaid without first being road-milled. There may be some streets that were overlaid without milling before my time, although I know of none that have a drainage problem because of it. In the past five years, the road district has spent over two point nine eight million dollars on the city's transportation infrastructure. This does not include the over two million dollars they spent on the new road to the hospital. The monies which the road district and the city received for these projects is taxpayer money. It has always been the responsibility of both entities to be responsible stewards of this money. This ensures that the citizens of the community receive the most value for their tax dollars. To make accusations and point fingers at one another serves no useful purpose. I am confident the city and the road district can continue to work together in concert to obtain our mutual goals. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Sincerely, H.J. Bear Kissler. That concludes the comment from the public. That was the only comment we received. The next item. Excuse me, one moment. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items six through nine, those being the Arbor Day Proclamation, Approval of the Minutes in the Special Council Meeting of April first, twenty-twenty, Approval of the Minutes of the Council Work Session of April seventh, twenty-twenty, and Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Council Meeting of April seventh, twenty-twenty. Mr. Mayor, would you like to entertain a motion for approval?
Have we got a motion?
Councilmember Clevenger, will you verbalize?
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
I second that motion.
Councilmember Clevenger, seconded by Councilmember Pierce.
Councilmember Pierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Eight to zero, motion carries. Number nine. Purchasing Manual Minority Business and Women's Business Enterprises, Resolution Number twenty dash zero-two-six.
Madam Clerk, just for confirmation, I had that down as item ten. Am I incorrect?
No, I mean, correct.
Oh, well. All right. So the next item is Purchasing Manual Minority Business and Women's Business Enterprises. And the city's purchasing manual was approved by the city council in two thousand and six, and it is overdue for an overhaul. And staff is engaged in a comprehensive review, and we will bring changes to the manual to the council in the not distant future. But at this time, we are bringing forward an addition to the policy manual that staff recommends be added now, which is to add a section stating the city's commitment to take affirmative steps to assure that minority business enterprises and women's business enterprises are aware of solicitation for provision of goods and services to the city and will have an opportunity to be chosen for them. These affirmative steps would include placing qualified small and minority businesses and women's business enterprises on solicitation lists and assuring that those enterprises are solicited whenever they are potential sources by using the state's Missouri Office of Equal Opportunity listing of those businesses to search for qualifying vendors. We are recommending that you move forward on this now for a couple of reasons. We do believe that we're out of the mainstream in not having these provisions as part of our manual of policy and practice. Seeking out bids and proposals from minority and women-owned businesses is now mainly a standard practice for most local governments. Also, our position outside of the mainstream could threaten, you know, our ability to receive state and federal funds in the future as having these policies stated and practices often a prerequisite to receiving such funding. And this is especially relevant at this point in time when we might be eligible for some reimbursements for some expenditures that we'd be making to deal with the current coronavirus crisis. So we have prepared for council consideration or resolution approving the addition of a new section to the city's purchasing manual stating the city's commitment to take affirmative steps to assure that minority business enterprises and women's business enterprises are sought out for city contracts and given the opportunity to compete for them. And we do recommend that addition to the purchasing manual. Councilmember Clevenger?
I just had a quick question. I'm all for this. First of all, I know that at one point in time at the city we were looking at. So this is basically going to get the minority qualified minority and women businesses on the list so that when we bid something out, they're notified of it. Is there something we can do that for, or maybe we're already doing that for local North Kansas City businesses? I know at one time we looked at, you know, giving them, I don't know if it was preferential treatment, not preferential, but, you know, giving them kind of a first crack at it. Know that legally probably couldn't do that, and you're not looking to do that here. But are most of our qualified city businesses that are in the city, are we aware of them, and are they on these lists that we want to put the minority and women businesses on now?
Well, to be clear, these are lists that are kept by the state. So, no, they wouldn't be. But what we do try to do is encourage everybody to register with us on our website, and then that creates a list. And then anytime that we have a particular procurement that applies to a particular vendor, we make sure that they are notified that we have that procurement out for bid.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pierce?
Frankly, and it's my own fault that I haven't read the purchasing manual. I would have assumed this was already part of that. I wholeheartedly agree. Long time coming, needs to be coming. And I think once it's, needs to be listed, as you already indicated, there's a state list of it. I absolutely agree with this resolution, and we need to get it done right away. Thank you.
If there are no further questions or comments, Mr. Mayor, would you like to entertain a motion?
Do we entertain a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Councilmember Farr, seconded by Councilmember Pierman.
Councilmember Pierman?
Whoops. Yes.
I thought I was muted. Councilmember Clevenger?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong? Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Eight to zero, the motion carries. Number eleven. Budget Amendment Pub Stations, Resolution Number twenty dash zero-two-seven.
Thank you. For this item, I'd like to call on the Public Works Director, Pat Hopper.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The memo in your packets that details the ongoing pump and motor repairs was discussed at the April seventh work session. So I don't plan on repeating the details again tonight of the memo, but I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have. The following summarizes the actual and anticipated costs of the pump stationery issues for which the budget amendment is requested. At the Lynn Jasper Storm Water Pump Station, forty-three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Twenty-sixth Avenue Storm Water Pump Station, one hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. Rock Creek Storm Water Pump Station, seventy-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And Burlington Sewage Pump Station, sixteen thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. That comes to three hundred and thirty-seven thousand and seventy dollars. The amount budgeted for pump repairs in the twenty-twenty budget was forty thousand dollars. Staff recommends a budget amendment in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand and seventy dollars to cover these expenses, which will leave approximately fifty thousand in this item to cover other pump repairs that may occur throughout the rest of this fiscal year. In the twenty-twenty budget, the council made the decision to transfer necessary funds for capital expenses from the gaming fund to the WPC fund. Therefore, the budget amendment is for a transfer from the gaming fund in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand and seventy dollars. Are there any questions?
Councilmember DeLong?
This kind of relates to the email I sent you. In the note, it describes how you, staff isn't entirely clear that some of the costs should not be shouldered by the levy district. Which ones were you concerned about? I mean, what part do you think could possibly, should possibly be shouldered by the levy district?
I don't honestly have a good answer to that right now. We would like to have that discussion further with them, as I indicated and showed you. It's a nineteen fifty-five agreement that seems to indicate that certain expenses are the responsibility of the levy district. Right now, we roughly contributed about fifty percent each to the cost of this repair. We need to get the repair done, so we didn't want to handle at this point. But I do think some further discussion between us would be appropriate to make sure that, I'd like to understand a little bit better their reasoning for the split of the costs that we have, for the moment, agreed to. So I'd like to get the city councilor involved in taking a look at the agreement, maybe talking to the levy district's attorney, not looking for a fight or anything with the levy district.
Yeah, yeah.
Just want to understand this agreement better. So.
Just reading through that, it didn't seem super clear exactly what you were going towards. That's why I wanted to look at the agreements, and of course, reading through them, they don't become abundantly clear either. So on the bill, though, this is a, the total bill was received from the levy district, though, and they told us what the split is.
There was some discussion and agreement to agree, at least for the moment, on certain split of costs with. But when I saw that, I did tell the Public Works Director that I would like to explore this further to, with the levy district, to make sure we both understand what we're each responsible for. So we're, I'd like to have that discussion going forward and report back to you.
All right. Sounds like a good plan. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Move to approve?
Excuse me, I see Councilmember Stefan, I believe, has a question or comment. Is that correct?
Well, yes. I mean, there's needs and there's wants, and it seems to me that this is a need we have to get done.
Move to approve?
Already made the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Councilmember Farr, seconded by Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Pierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong? Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Eight to zero, motion carried. Item twelve. Budget Amendment Municipal Court Show Me Courts, Resolution Number twenty dash zero-two-eight.
Eric, would you like me to present?
Excuse me, I was, I apologize, I was muted. Yes, please present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Kim Nakahodo, the city administrator. Just to refresh everybody's memory, that our municipal court is actually a division of the statewide court system, which is controlled by the Missouri Supreme Court. In two thousand and eighteen, the Missouri Court Automation Committee and Change Control Subcommittee adopted and implemented a plan to designate the Show Me Court System as the mandatory statewide court management system. In its January twenty-first, twenty-twenty regular council meeting, executed the Show Me Court Statement of Expectations and Agreement and amended Section two point three six point two six zero of the court costs to implement a seven-dollar fee to help pay for that Show Me Courts online system. All the new proceeds go to that system, and any further implementation costs, according to the Missouri State Court, Missouri State Courts Administrator, OSKA, must be paid for by the municipality. I don't know if you remember, but we presented on this back in January that as we began through our implementation process, we didn't really know what the system did and did not, and we did anticipate some, some perhaps some future costs associated with this mandatory transition. Implementing the software, one of the things that we recognized was that the Brazos software interface Brazos is a system that the city's e-ticketing system uses. So when officers or our code enforcement officers are out there, they use to actually issue the citation to whomever they're issuing it to. That system does not automatically talk to the Show Me Court system, which means that in order to have tickets show up in the Show Me Court system right now, our staff is going to have to manually enter those daily. Just to kind of refresh everybody's recollection of how many tickets the court processes in a year, it's a little over forty-four hundred. So that would be manual entry, and anytime that you have manual entry, you also have the opportunity for errors. So one of the things that we are requesting is that Tyler Tech, who is the administrator of the cities, they're the ones who provide the city's in-code system. They can write a software interface that would allow the system to automatically upload that into Show Me Courts for us. It does take four to five months to develop that script, so in that meantime, our staff would have to manually import that data. I would like to give you a quick update that because of the COVID, we have not, our Show Me Court implementation date was supposed to be April first. We have not begun implementation, and at this time, we do not know when we will be transferred over. That would be something that I'd be happy to update the city council when we figure out our implementation day. But as it stands right now, there is a window of opportunity to have that script, kind of get a little bit of a head start, which would reduce our manual loading process into that new system. Another thing would be, another request would be for a new cabinet workstation because we will have to manage both the in-code system, which is right now what we are using, and the new Show Me Court system for conceivably the next ten years. We would like to have two separate workstations. This would allow our clerk to be able to process customers at the window much faster and allow us to not have confusion between the two systems. Again, we are going to be administering these two systems for a considerable amount of time. So this new cabinet would allow us to set up two completely different work systems for our city clerk, or for our municipal court clerks. Staff is requesting the following budget amendment for the Brazos software interface, forty-three hundred, and the new cabinet workstation, fourteen hundred, for a total amended request of fifty-seven hundred dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
If there are no questions, Mr. Mayor, would you like to entertain a motion?
Have we got a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Farr, seconded by Councilmember Pierman.
Councilmember Pierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong? You're muted, Councilmember DeLong.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
And Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Eight to zero, motion carries. Number thirteen. Waiver of Late Penalties for Utility Payments and Business License Renewals, Resolution Number twenty dash zero-two-five.
Thank you. At the city council meeting of last, of April seventh, your last council meeting, the city council expressed interest in taking measures to provide relief to residents and businesses that have been hard hit by the ongoing coronavirus pandemic. Our staffs have prepared a resolution for waiving late penalty, excuse me, waiving late payment penalties for utility payments and business license renewal payments until June first, twenty-twenty, for city council consideration. Are there any questions? Councilmember DeLong, followed by Councilmember Clevenger?
Okay, this time I'm unmuted. So this, would this apply? So our last bill cycle begins accruing late charges as of yesterday, according to my bill. So would that apply to those? This last month?
No. No, we've, we would, we extended that for a few days pending your decision tonight. So we, in other words.
So late charges, oh, you extended. You extended what part?
We extended the date by, that it would be effective. So if you take the action tonight, then the late fees would not apply to those bills.
To the previous months. Okay.
Correct.
And then there's an end date on this, where we took the end date away from the emergency order. But, you know, I guess we could just come back and extend it later, like it says in the.
That was our thought.
Do it again for next month. Okay.
That was our thought. If we're still in the crisis, we would bring it back to you for renewal.
Okay. Yeah, I definitely recommend people, if they can pay their bill, pay your bill. If you pay a little bit of your bill, pay a little bit of your bill. But definitely, I don't think anyone doesn't want to pay their bills right now. So I think this is, this is important not to pile on people in a time like this. So I think this is a good resolution. Thank you.
Councilmember Clevenger?
I'm in agreement. I think this is something that we can do to help our residents out. And I know before all this happened, that the water fund was in pretty good shape. Now, does staff have any kind of projection on, and you may not, of how much this might cost the water fund as far as on these late charges?
No, sir, but it wouldn't be a huge amount.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. I'm all for it as well.
Councilmember Pierce, followed by Councilmember DeLong?
I would like to say, and I hope there's a whole bunch of people watching this, but I doubt that they are. But please pass the information on, that we do have funds, and I'm wearing my other hat. I'm the exec director of Northland Assistance Center. We receive money from Harrah's that is directly for North Kansas City residents. If you are having trouble with your water bill, you need to let your residents know to contact me. The water bills here are very, very inexpensive, so it does not take a great deal of revenue. I do not want North Kansas City water bills to be an issue to any of our residents because my agency, as a result of not only Harrah's, but several other amazing contributions, can help that. So we don't need to charge late penalties. I think that's a really bad idea. We do not need to put an end date on that because even when people are back to work, just because we say we can all go back to work, doesn't mean everybody's going to have money. So it, I want to leave that fluid as somebody who runs a not-for-profit. And I'm sorry if I'm wearing both hats right now, but I think it's really important that if North Kansas City residents are in fear of not having water or need help with their water bills, they can contact Northland Assistance Center. I would say that even if I wasn't the exec director, but knew about it. So you need to know about these things. So there's no reason why anyone in North Town should have to worry about their water bill. They're not that expensive. When we've had people approach my agency when they're in delinquency, it's been so much less than any other water company that we pay for, like Casey Water, Gladstone, Liberty. Please contact us. That, you know, we're in a crisis right now. This is just one bill you really, literally, I can assure you, I can guarantee you, you don't need to worry about. Thank you.
Councilmember DeLong?
My question, so this last billing cycle was due on four nineteen. Do we have any idea how many people haven't paid the last bill?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that. I. I'm sorry, I I don't know the answer to that, I we could try to find out for you.
Okay, no, I was just curious, maybe you have the number since it was due a couple of days ago, but that that's okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pierce.
Again, we receive very few requests for delinquent water bills for North Kansas City because we serve Clay and Platte County, so I. Again, I reiterate, if you're having problems with your water bill and you're delinquent in your water bill or you have fear of it, please contact. Our agency because we have monies directly for North Kansas City. To help with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Pyramin.
I'm in favor of just making it July first, if we can do that on this with a motion and then we can just revisit it at that point.
You can do that with a motion, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, if there are no further questions, I will make a motion.
Councilmember Pierce.
Second.
Thank you.
So just to make sure I understand the motion is to adopt the resolution with the change to make the the date July first, twenty twenty, is that correct?
Correct. Councilmember Pyramin. Yes. I forgot, I had to say that. Councilmember Clevenger.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan.
Yes.
Councilmember Farr.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong.
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce. Councilmember Pierce.
Yes.
And Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Eight to zero motion carries. Item fourteen, approving accounts due and payable by the city through April seventeenth, twenty twenty, bill number seventy nine oh two. Ordinance number ninety, seventy five oh two, ordinance number ninety two ninety nine.
Move first reading.
Second.
Councilmember Farr, seconded by Councilmember Pyramin.
Councilmember Pyramin. Yes. Councilmember Clevenger.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan.
Yes.
Councilmember Farr.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong.
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And ordinance approving accounts due and payable by the city through April seventeenth, twenty twenty.
I move the bill number seventy five oh two be placed on second and final reading and passes ordinance number ninety two ninety nine.
Second.
Councilmember Farr, seconded by Councilmember Pyramin.
Councilmember Pyramin. Yes. Councilmember Clevenger.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan.
Yes.
Councilmember Farr.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong.
Yes, now, yes.
Councilmember Pierce.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And ordinance approving accounts due and payable by the city through April seventeenth, twenty twenty.
Thank you. The next item is staff comments. We do have a number of comments tonight. Like to begin by talking about the scheduled meeting on the Armor Road Complete Street Project. As you recall, at the Armor Road Complete Street Project Public Meeting on October fifteenth. The city council directed the June second, twenty twenty be established as a date to revisit the project. For a few reasons, staff believes this meeting date should be pushed back. First, the city was to have counts performed of motor vehicle and bicycle traffic along with obtaining motor vehicle travel time data in early May. To establish comparisons with pre-project data that was obtained in May of twenty nineteen. Staff assumes this is important data that the city council would want to have for this meeting. We also think it should be assumed that the stay-at-home order during the ongoing health emergency. Is skewing the numbers that are currently being seen. So if this writing the date when the stay-at-home order might be lifted in life will begin returning to some semblance of normals I determined, it was at the time I wrote the memo. Currently, stay-at-home order is extended until May fifteenth. Staff believes it's unlikely that good data can be obtained in time for the scheduled meeting on June second. Also, Governor Parson issued an order delaying the municipal election from April seventh to June second. The date scheduled for this meeting. It's city practice not to hold work sessions on election day when the polls are still open. Thirdly, when it was scheduled, this meeting was to occur about two months after the municipal election and it would seem appropriate to staff that this meeting occur at least sometime after the currently scheduled. Municipal election when a new city council is seated. So we are seeking a direction regarding the schedule of this meeting, we are suggesting to you that, at least for now. That June thirtieth might be a good date to hold a special meeting on this topic that is a fifth Tuesday. So we would like to get your input about that. And then we would also like to get some input from you as to how you would like to get public input on this question. Would you like to to do it in the same kind of manner as we did it in October when about seventy-two people, seventy-two people spoke? If we were to have that kind of meeting again, we would suggest looking for an alternative location for the meeting to the city council chambers, which is where we did it before. Our thought might be that we might approach the school district about doing it in the Performing Arts Center, the new Performing Arts Center. At North Kansas City High School, we had very general discussions with them about the possibility of doing that for big meetings and they indicated that they would be glad to work with us, so that might be a possibility. We also would like to, you know, determine if you. Wanted to do that, other means of of obtaining. Public input might be that we we could do some kind of a an online survey before the meeting, we would note that. We had asked that question on the community survey and business survey. That have been conducted, we expect to have those results very soon, in fact, we received a draft. Business survey and we expect the community survey this week, so we'll have that those reports to you shortly, which will also have. The data on on the responses to those questions. Or you could do some kind of a pre-meeting or post-meeting workshop such as the Burlington Corridor Workshop that was held at I-Works. So I guess if I we could begin by just asking two questions, one. Would you agree, would you like to to move the meeting date to say June thirtieth? Councilmember Smith.
Sorry, so my thought on that is with June thirtieth being, I believe would be the second. Council meeting for the newly elected, because there'll be at least two new. If my math is correct, two new council people on, that seems really quick to to have a big meeting with two brand-new. Council people, giving them a little time to get acquainted and get some input. Or throwing them in the fire with that kind of a a meeting. Perhaps we could do the same margin, so the two months after the meeting would put us at the beginning of August, that would give us some time over the summer to see how cars are using the road, how bikes are using the road. Would just give us a little more time to see what's actually going on rather than a little over a month perhaps after returning to normal. And then I do think that the public forum, while it can keep pretty long, is the best way to let people be heard. If we did a poll, that could be distributed far and wide, an online poll. If we took. Email comments, that that's a possibility, but having people come out and speak is. That's the true community engagement, so that would be my option.
Councilmember Clevenger.
Were you first, Rita, you can go first if you want.
I was, actually.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I also agree with Councilmember Smith on this, I think June thirtieth is way too soon, I think we need to let the summer go through. Regardless of your opinion on Armor Road, we have not had a summer go through, I also agree that whomever is elected, particularly, you're right, there's going to be two new council members. You know, having been a new council member myself, you don't know what's going on completely, so you need a little bit of time and some meetings behind you, I do not think that online is a really good idea. Because I think we've established in this community that although there are a number of people who are really good at doing that, there are a number of people who are not. And those are the people who get really resentful when we do things online and they don't have an opportunity to come in and speak, so I think an open forum would be a good idea, I think June thirtieth is way too soon. I like the idea of putting that into August as Councilmember Smith suggested. Thank you.
Councilmember Clevenger.
Okay. Blame him, Rita, not me, no. Couple of things, I agree with Councilmember Smith as well. When you are a new council member, there is a lot to, there is a learning curve to to learn. And I think, you know, I don't know if a June thirtieth day gives us enough time to get the the data that we need, I think the more data we have, the better decision that we can make. It also allows to get back to normal, hopefully, and get traffic patterns back to normal because they may not be totally back to normal in June, we don't know. So I think pushing it out a couple of weeks, a couple of months after the election is a good idea as well, I'm for that as well.
Councilmember Stewart.
I don't care about the dates, it makes more sense to have it probably in August than June. With what's going on now, there's no traffic problem at all right now. But I do have a little bit of a problem with the. Massive amount of people getting up to speak if they're going to say the same thing. At one time with the different mayor years ago. We had a meeting and I forget, it might have been over the trash, it was a big meeting. And finally, the mayor said, you know. If you're going to say the very same thing, just raise your hand that you agree with this person. Whatever, I don't mind people speaking, but when you go home for how many hours did we go last time, you know, with three hours? With people saying almost the same thing, I don't mind different things, you know, if seventy-two people have a different idea, fine. But we're just hearing things over and over again. I don't like it, but. That's all I got to say.
Councilmember Smith and then Councilmember Pierce. Councilmember Smith and then Councilmember Pierce.
I I didn't have anything to say, I was.
Oh, I apologize, Councilmember Pierce.
Okay, two things, one, I think I forgot to mention this last time I spoke, that I think we need to include the data that's already out there because I think that was some good data, I I really in. I, as I spoke the last city council meeting, I think they did a really good job. With that survey that we did, so we need to not exclude that data. But, you know, with all due respect to Councilmember Stewart, you know, our job is to listen to everybody's voice. And some people are going to have the same voices, I don't know how we can clump people together if people choose. And this would be me, if I had a group of people who agreed the same thing, I would find a spokesperson and I would encourage that if we have an open meeting. But every voice, every voice who is a resident of North Kansas City or a business owner of North Kansas City. Or is affected in some way by what we're doing in North Kansas City should have the opportunity to be heard, and I know it was a long meeting the last time, but you know. That's what we're supposed to do, in my opinion, as officials representing our ward, representing our city. The thing I would really warn against in the next meeting is the political coalitions who have sent to all of us. The last time this went out, these little letters that all resembled the same, which I eventually discarded. You know, you need to be careful and I'm just speaking because I'm hoping other people are listening, if you have an opinion, that's great and I don't have to agree or disagree. But don't, I I don't want it to be a political or a block or, you know, a group of people. Who are all saying the same thing, which are the same letters I received from Bike Walk the last time, and I don't want that, I want individual opinions or group opinions when they can come to a consensus. To alleviate these sort of problems, that's all I have to say.
Councilmember DeLong.
I agree with August, agree that it would be tough for someone new to come in, my question is more related to your comments, are we tracking data now as well? Some may just be interesting to see for other things, you know, the impact and what traffic has looked like during the pandemic.
No, sir, we are not getting data right now, we're, no, so we aren't.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, does anybody else have any questions or comments, otherwise I might have a suggestion, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I just want to say I I do agree with what Rita said, I don't mind listening to seventy-two people with their own opinion, but like that bicycle group. When I seen their form letters, I just delete them, I know what they're going to say, I read the first one. And I don't like the the group. You know, there's like a pack of wolves in there and I'm one that likes bicycle lanes and and they sit in there tagging me because I said that thing could have been done a different way. It was a group, you know, and that's what I was trying to, you know, if seventy-two people from the group. Each want to come up there and say the same thing, just like their letter did is what I don't like.
May I suggest as a date based upon what I'm hearing, the consensus for August, and I would suggest that it not be, that it be a special meeting. So I might suggest the second or fourth Tuesday in August, perhaps aim for August eleventh for a special meeting. Not seeing any disagreement, shall we see some thumbs, eight thumbs up, okay, why don't we aim for, we will aim for, we will aim for August eleventh for for that meeting and we will. As of now, I'll count on having a sort of a town hall type meeting as as we did last October. So if there's nothing else on that item.
Any time for that one, Eric?
Oh, well, probably six o'clock, I would think, I think that's what time we began the last one.
Would that be before schools in session too on August eleventh, so we don't have a conflict there if we do hold it at the Performing Arts Center?
I think so, I think I.
Should be before.
Probably before, yeah.
Just make sure.
I will, yes, sir. All right. We're moving on to, thank you for that, moving on to the next item of a similar nature, this has to do with. The scheduled strategic strategic planning session in June. This is the meeting that where the city council meets with a facilitator and with the management team to develop. Goals for the next two or three years for the city, we last did this a couple of years ago in June. We were aiming for maybe June nineteenth, twentieth. We have, we did go ahead and put out an RFQ for strategic. Plan facilitators and Assistant City Administrator and I have. Reached a consensus on on who we think would be. A good, a well-qualified facilitator for this session, however, we do think that this session as well should be postponed. To a some future date in the summer, which we we didn't have a particular date in mind, but. The reasoning is we think that no matter what is happening. And and what the status is of the. Stay home and and we will still have to socially distance. If you, those of you who participated in this process before. I think you have some idea that it requires a fair amount of fairly intense collaboration between. The city council and the staff and and all the participants and and we we don't think that it can be done in in a. A very, we'd like to have a discussion with the facilitator, but we think that it would best be done at a time when we can. Not be quite so separated out, of course, social distancing might be going on for a very long time, but. At this point, we think that trying to do the meeting in June is probably not realistic. So. We'd like to just see if anybody has any objections to postponing it to. At this time, undesignedated future time, but a few months out, does anybody object to that or have any questions? All right, well, we will plan on that, but we will contact the facilitator to have further discussions about availability and and their thoughts on how to. How to best try to conduct this, Councilmember Stewart.
Just one thought on that planning session, if we get too far back, we're going to be already ever budget done, not much planning to do once you've done your budget.
It is true, sir, that that it would affect that. We just think this is a special time that. We just think this is a special time that probably just requires a somewhat different procedure. But yes, in general, you, the idea is to get it done ahead of the, uh, supplemental of the budget. I agree with you. Councilmember Pierce.
Um, I think you brought up a really good, uh, you know, point, councilmember Stewart, but I think that we're not gonna have any idea what the budget's gonna look like. I mean, I think postponing a little bit further will also help enable us to, you know, also have a better handle on what's going on with that. I, again, I don't think we need to propose a date. I, this are just bizarre times. So yeah, ideally we do it in June. Hopefully we can do it by July or August. But we won't even know what the budget's gonna look like until a whole, a lot more time goes through. And even then, we're probably gonna be guestimating, uh, when we all meet. So just my thoughts.
All right. If there's nothing more on that, then I'll move on to the next item, uh, which is just an informational item for you. To let you know that the Clay County Health Center, uh, is working on a plan and guidance for how to safely reopen uh, in the coming weeks. It's based on the federal guidance that was issued recently. And, uh, we, we expect that they will, uh, they will be promulgated soon. They, the, the Clay County, uh, Public Health Center, uh, Director, uh, did, uh, send out a draft, uh, to certain selected folks in the county and asked for comments. So I, I expect that to be finalized and promulgated soon. And, uh, we will see what happens in the coming weeks in terms of a gradual reopening of, uh, both our city organization and, and, and business activity. So look for that. The next item, uh, regards the Richards Park Sculpture funded out of the Crummet Beautification Fund. So for this report on that, I'd like to call on the Assistant City Administrator, Kim Nakahodo.
Hello, this is Kim Nakahodo. There was a detailed memo in your packet and I'd like to go over that just real quickly. In June two thousand eighteen, the city council approved the formation of a committee to develop ideas for beautification for the special Timsy Crummet Charitable Fund. That fund is a endowment fund. It is not general funds. It, it comes from a, uh, it is administered by the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation. And anytime that there are any overages or that fund performs well, the city does receive an endowment. It issued a national call to artists for the Richards Park Public Art Program or Project in November two thousand eighteen. This call to artists had a very strong response with eighty-three artists submitting RFPs. And after a comprehensive jury process, the committee selected Seija Chen. The original budget, uh, was eighty-five thousand dollars. Seventy thousand of that was for the public art sculpture. There was a five thousand dollar contingency fund and insulation landscaping and dedication was an additional ten thousand, bringing it up to its total eighty-five thousand. That budget was assembled with the best information known at the time. The sculpture did require additional engineering surface, services and substantial site work not anticipated at the time that that budget was developed. Uh, according to the agreement, the artist was responsible for the creation of the sculpture and any associated engineering services related to the sculpture above ground. The city was responsible for the engineering of the sculpture base and installation, as well as any lighting or landscaping of the site. There were, there were several things that had happened from the time of when the sculpture was accepted to how you see it today. One of them was changes to the scope. When it was first conceived, the sculpture was going to be mounted on a base inside of that brick retaining wall. In September of two thousand nineteen, the artist approached the committee about removing the brick wall so that the sculpture would be flushed to the ground. The removal of the brick retaining wall served two purposes. One is it simplified the sculpture's base design and installation. And it created the illusion of the sculpture floating on the brick, similar to a water lily. When this decision came, um, there was also the thought of adding irrigation and reconfiguring the Richards Park Plaza to accommodate the sculpture. One of the things that you'll see in the footnote is when that decision was made, we did not have a clear understanding of the financial effects that would come with those decisions. The retaining wall was demolished by city staff. Because of engineering standards within Missouri and it being in a public space, the base of that sculpture was highly complicated and actually required three different concrete pores and the plaza to be heavily excavated and then reconstructed. The city worked with the engineering forum that was chosen by the artists, which was McClure Engineering on the design of the base sculpture configuration, lighting and plaza design. And again, like I said, this was a more complicated process. A lot of it has to do with the engineering standards that is in Missouri with straight line winds. So the base, um, actually has three different phases to it, which encapsulates the sculpture and allows for the, for that sculpture to be able to withstand the straight line winds that we have in Missouri. The, I don't know if you remember, but in, we got a little bit of an October surprise, which was some severe cold weather and snow, actually, when the sculpture was installed. By the artist and engineer and the engineer. And they were chosen because of the very tight footprint and very shallow base of the sculpture. What we didn't know at the time was that the lights would require a twelve to sixteen week fabrication period and that they came at a substantial cost. One of the things that, the reasons why we went with the subgrade LED lighting canisters was the ability to maintain those lights. The first three lights that were suggested were a sealed design, meaning that they had about a fifteen-year guarantee of operation. We at the city have not had very good luck with LED lighting and those multi-year guarantees. If you look along the lights, along armor, as the council knows, those are supposed to be ten to fifteen year lights and we've only gotten a few of them. So we wanted to go with a light that was maintainable, meaning that we could actually unscrew it and replace the light when they burn out. This did add to this, to the cost of the lights. The third and final pore was completed in early February and the plaza was reconstructed in late February. The electrical contractor finished installing the lights once the final pore had cured in late February. March is when the city received the outstanding invoices for the project. The cost for the engineering lights and concrete and reconstruction of the plaza far exceeded the original estimates due to the complex nature of the site and structural needs of the sculptures. The final anticipated cost of the project is one hundred forty-three thousand nine hundred and five dollars and thirty-eight cents. You can see the cost breakdown in your, in your memo, in your memo. So on Monday, April sixth, the Timsy Crummet Charitable Foundation Charitable Fund Projects Committee approved amending the Richards Park Public Art Sculpture to allow for the payment of the outstanding invoices, which was fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and five dollars and thirty-eight cents. The city, if you kind of look along in the memo, in two thousand eighteen, the fund balance was a little over two hundred and eight thousand dollars. After the Brewster or the, uh, Pilot mural program and the Richards Park Sculpture, add that with the two thousand twenty fund endowment, the rest, the resulting fund balance as it stands for the Richards Park, or for the Timsy Crummet Charitable Foundation Fund is ninety-seven thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents. Now considered substantially complete, you will see orange fencing surrounding the sculpture and that will remain in place until our municipal services crews can install the landscaping. That landscaping would have already been installed had it not been for the ongoing COVID global pandemic. That fencing cannot come down until the landscaping is installed. The landscaping is a natural deterrent to people approaching and climbing on the sculpture. Uh, once it is sometime in the future, unknown at this time, we will have signage installed after the landscaping is installed. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Pierce.
I don't have any questions. I'm actually on that committee much my surprise since I'm not an artist. I just really wanna make it clear in these economic times that these are not funds that come from anything involved with citizens or taxes or whatever. It is a grant. Uh, so when you hear these additional expenses and whatnot, and if you're watching the city council meeting, this is not coming out of your pocket. This is coming out of pockets of people who are, may or may not even be related to the city. And that's all I wanna say because, you know, we're all stressed and we all are listening to money and we're all concerned about monies. This is a fund that has nothing to do with we as citizens of North Ken City. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. I'd like to call on the Community Development Director, Sarah Copeland, to make a couple of staff comments.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. Uh, my first comment concerns our Armor Road Phase Two B project. Um, if you'll recall, this construction project includes a waterline extension between Vernon and Taney on the south side of Armor Road, um, the installation of a median on Taney Street and other improvements to complete, uh, the infrastructure for the Armor Road redevelopment area. Um, at the beginning of this week, we, we received a second change order from Mega Industries on this project. This change order includes, um, really a, a couple of, of items. They found an abandoned, a storm sewer line and when they were doing their excavation and so had to, to, uh, investigate that and eventually remove it. Um, they also removed a piece of, um, an old foundation that was in conflict with the waterline location. And there was, um, a connection to an existing service line that had been called out as three-quarter inch pipe on the plans, but was found to be a two-inch pipe. And so had to make a change to the, to the tap for that. The total cost of these miscellaneous changes is nine thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. This is well below our remaining budget authority for this project, which is thirty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. Because we didn't receive this change order, um, in time to put this on today's agenda, we are hoping to have your informal approval, um, for them to go ahead with, um, the remainder of this work and then have the formal, um, approval of the change order on your next agenda for May fifth. This was the same procedure we used for change order number one, which was also received, um, right before a council meeting. If you have any questions, I would be happy to take those. Okay, if not, um, item number two that I had for you this evening is that Mark has announced their call for projects this spring for federal transportation funds. Um, the main one being the Surface Transportation, um, Program. Um, this is the project that is supporting our Burlington Phase One Construction Project. Um, when we last discussed budget and phasing for this project, council had directed staff to plan to make an application for federal funds to support a future phase three of construction for the west side of the Burlington Corridor. Um, the call for projects this spring is for funds in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. And staff does intend to start work on an application. The, um, application window opens at the end of this month and the deadline to apply is May twenty-ninth. Um, if you have any questions or comments about that, I would be happy to take those. But otherwise, staff intends to start work on that to have an application, um, completed and, and submitted by the end of May.
Thank you, Sarah. And I would just note that there are three, uh, reports in your, uh, packet, uh, the upcoming city items of note. Uh, the YMCA Monthly Financial Report for February of twenty twenty and a report on the, uh, calendar year, uh, finances of the YMCA for twenty nineteen. If you have any questions about those, be happy to try to answer them. In that case, uh, the next item is council member comments. And I would begin with councilmember Pierman.
I don't have a lot to say tonight. Uh, just wanna, um, tell everyone, thank you for making this format work and, um, allowing us to be able to continue to meet and conduct city business. So thank you.
Councilmember Clevenger.
How about the first? I've got nothing tonight except everybody stay safe.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, it's about the same. You know, if everybody keeps saying safe and I understand there's a barber shop down to Smith's Place. I've seen that on, uh, Facebook, I think it was. Pretty good haircut. But, uh, but guys, I made a joke there and then I forgot what I was actually gonna say. Oh, I do remember. My wife gives full approval for everybody to get out and go to the, the drive-throughs and the pickup. She only cooked a couple of days this week. She felt it our duty to go out every day and pick up something. So support our city where you can. Thank you.
Councilmember Stefan.
Well, I just repeat that everybody, I hope they stay safe and, and keep their social distancing. We'll see how things go in the future, near future and how things impact the virus and social distancing. Thing is, uh, in that intermediate future, going forward, I hope we can find a vaccine for this. And then if a vaccine is, uh, when it is discovered, it will be. It's just a matter of time. You don't know if it, how long it'll be before a vaccine comes up. There may be people that have adverse reactions to it. This virus, in my opinion, is very serious. From the fact that as near as I seen, at just rough estimates, out of everyone that contracts it, three percent are gonna die. Three percent of everybody that gets it is dead. And then when you go up in age groups and you get up in my age group, it's over eight percent is dead. And you go up other age groups and the numbers go up higher for the fatalities. So it'd be nice to get things back to normal and nice to get a haircut. The only place you can get a haircut now is on the stock market. That's all I have.
Well, I want everybody to be safe. Um, I don't have to worry about a haircut right now or in the near future. But the thing that worries me is I just hope we don't turn the, the key on too early. I mean, I, I was reading down south, they're already starting to open things back up again. And there again, though, we don't have a cure for it. We don't have a vaccine for it. Hopefully it won't be ten times as worse in two months. I, I, I don't know. I, I'm not a predictor. But I just hope we, we, we be smart. I mean, we have been so far and just don't turn the key on too quick. Just everybody be safe. That's all I have.
All right. Uh, question for city staff. Do we have any city-specific COVID numbers at this point or is it all just Clay County numbers?
My understanding is that we have three or four people who are at least quarantining at this time in the city.
Okay, so, but you are getting some sort of data from Clay County.
We, we, we do have some information about that. At least people who are quarantining under the possibility that they might. I, I think, I think we have three or four positives to answer your question, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And then, and on a positive note, uh, just wanna recognize some businesses that continue to make positive impacts around the community during this pandemic. Uh, the first one, several weeks ago, Harris, after they shut down, donated a lot of their gloves and masks to, uh, the hospital as well as donating food to the YMCA that I've now got distributed to other parts of town as well. Rest of spirits shifted their production to help make standard sanitizer and has been donating a lot of that hand sanitizer to area nonprofits as well as Chicken and Pickle. They did a free hot chicken sandwich one day for first responders and medical professionals. And they continue to do ten, twenty percent bills, contributed to various charities and also like, what is it, buy one, I get one free. They've been doing that, I think, on Wednesdays. I think donating those up to the hospital as well as. I think donating those up to the hospital as well as the brewery. They weren't on my list here. Just remember they also collecting and. Yeah, sending cans up to the hospital as well. So just want to recognize some of the positive impacts because they're still making during this. Pandemic. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Pierce.
Okay, following Bryant's positive note, I have thank yous as well. Uh, already disclosed that I run Northland Assistance Center, but before that, I want to thank Adam Roberts. Um, with the Screenland. He has been such a positive force in the city. He, every message he sends out to everybody. Is positive. He's given an opportunity for, uh, local businesses to talk about and discuss and. You know, commiserate about the loans and whatnot. And so I, I, I just really wanted to say something nice about him. Of course, Harris, they distributed their funds. Um, North Kansas City Fire Department, their community development people, they donated. To my agency. I'm sure they've donated to others, uh, as well. Uh, North Kansas City citizens in general. Um, I put out and, um, and actually the North Kansas City Business Council put out in my behalf. A need for money and some food, and it's really, really been an enormous thing. So for all the North Kansas City businesses and citizens who have supported. We locally, and since I am the only local agency, thank you. Um, but I have a suggestion tonight on a positive note. Um, we have. The twenty twenty class of North Kansas City High School really is, you know, I would not like to be a senior. You missed your prom, you're missing your graduation. So my suggestion to all of us as council members. And I hope we can agree so we can make this something for staff, is to put banners along Armor Road. Like we do for garage sales and every other sort of thing in the city. And I am not, uh, by no means a PR person, so somebody else needs to figure out how this needs to be. But we need to put banners along Armor Road congratulating the class of twenty twenty. Because of this pandemic. They're not having the same experiences that all of us did, as we well know. So I would really, really like the support of the city council to direct staff. To have these banners made and have them put up as soon as possible. To congratulate this class who's already going through a really, really difficult time. Thank you.
May I ask for one point of clarification on that, that council member? When you made the suggestion yesterday, and I did suggest that you bring it up at the council meeting, I had, I thought what you had in mind was the single. You used the, uh, the word banners, or what we, I thought you had in mind the single banner that we. Would, would stretch across Armor Road. Is, is that what you had in mind?
Whatever place that we already can establish the banners for like garage sales and what, if, if there's a single banner, let's do it.
That's what we do.
Yeah, okay, that's great.
Yeah.
But that's not very expensive and we need to do it. And I think that as citizens drive down Armor Road. They will see it and the kids will see it and I, I, and there's a lot of other things going on, which I think are positive, like yard signs and whatnot. But we as a city need to acknowledge these graduates in this very difficult time. And, um, I think it'd be a great idea. So just my thought.
Councilmember DeLong.
I think, can we potentially make the banner so we can use it year after year as well? Maybe something, you know, once we get it, we just change the date every year too.
Uh, we could, yes, sir, we can look at that. We could, we, we could maybe.
I just thought if we're already putting one up there, if we can get like one section, we could keep up heading as well. Thank you.
And unless there's an objection, staff will proceed with that. All right, and councilmember Smith.
Uh, yeah, the old Velcro final digit would last us at least a decade, I guess. So I, I'd like to thank, uh, Mayor Stilo and Eric for your leadership in all of this. And, uh, I'm proud to be a resident of North Kansas City and the Kansas City Metro that's really taking this all very seriously. Um, I look back at my home state, original home state of Georgia, and I don't really know what they're doing down there. So I'm glad that we're, we're taking this seriously. Um, another thing to keep an eye out in North Gate Village in our ward, uh, council, council. Pyramid has championed the alleyway redo project. So we've got letters headed out to some of you. Whose alleyway is going to be impacted. So if you see her out walking her dog, be sure to thank her from a socially acceptable distance. Um, and Mr. Pat Hawver also for putting that together. Also want to echo what Rita mentioned about Adam Roberts with Screenland. He has been an absolute just pillar in the community, uh, putting out all kinds of positive messaging, keeping everybody up to date on the, the PPP. And the EIDL and all the various small business programs. They're also preparing to launch a, uh, twelve-hour marathon fundraiser. A telethon for Screenland, so stay tuned for that. Um, uh, in addition to that, uh, drink and eat local. Um, support your local businesses because as Bryant noted, they're supporting us. And that's all from me.
Mayor Stilo.
I think it's all been said. Move to adjourn.
Well, we do have, uh, an executive session as the, uh, the next item on the council agenda. So, uh. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Chris. We'll go ahead.
Consideration of a request to hold in recess into an executive session is requested by the city administrator to be held on this date on a real estate matter. Pursuant to Missouri revised statutes, section six, ten point zero two one two.
So.
Second.
Councilmember Clevenger seconded by councilmember Farr.
Councilmember Pyramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yeah.
Was that a yes, Councilmember DeLong? Am I losing them?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, so, uh, at this time, I would like to ask all of, all of the staff. Yes, sir, we did.
No.
Okay, you're good, Bryant.
Okay, you are back live.
All right, thank you. Let the, let the record reflect that the council's back in open session, and at this point, I would. Uh, the mayor can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Uh, councilmember Farr seconded by councilmember Smith. I will call the roll. Councilmember Pyramon. Councilmember Pyramon.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, everybody have a good night.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Night, everyone. Thank you.